Thank you. I have 7:02. The City of University Heights City Council Meeting, June 8, 2021. I call the meeting to order. The meeting is being conducted electronically by Zoom. Welcome, everyone. All five council are present. First order of business approval of minutes, May 20, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Public input. Would anyone from the public like to speak to the council? You have five minutes or less to speak.
Louise, can I, can I jump in for a second? Um, we just admitted somebody who's on a phone number 319-400-1910. Is that you, Brennan?
No, Mike, that's me. This is Sarah.
Oh, okay.
I called in, I called in for the audio and I hit my participant number wrong, so.
Okay, I'll rename you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So would anyone from the public like to speak to the council?
Yeah, yes, I would like to, if that's all right.
Okay, Patrick. Thank you. State your name and your address for us.
My name is Patrick McRavy. I live at 55 Prospect Place in University Heights.
Okay, now you can, I know you've, the council has seen the report from Troy and the city attorney. And so you want to just briefly state that you're planning your wedding here?
Yeah, so we're planning our wedding here after kind of COVID threw that, you know, off track. In our backyard, it's kind of surrounded by fences. The big thing we wanted to do for it was, I think we sent out 46 invitations, could be 47, I always forget. I think we're expecting about 40 people. It's at 5:30. It should wrap up around 10:30. And if there are stragglers, I'm sure we'll go inside at that point. Not everyone will stay the whole time. Most people, I think, will stay for the ceremony and dinner directly after. And then some people will leave. The big things we worked on were parking. Most people will be staying at that new courtyard here near Kinnick. And we, I don't think we'll have anyone or just a few people parking here. We've notified everyone in the immediate area and like two houses over in the circumference of our house. On one side, there's just kind of a grove and we have a lot of trees around our house as well. And everyone is kind of on board. And what I mean, kind of, I mean, we've invited everyone, everyone might even come over. Everyone was okay with, with that plan. We do have music. We were going to be as responsible as we can with that. We've asked all the neighbors too, if they have, if we're causing a ruckus or something like that and it's too loud, please just let us know. We're going to be amicable to that. And I've spoken with Troy a few times about like the plan for that. I don't think it should be an issue, but if it is, we will be on top of that. And then the other thing, I don't know if it was addressed, I don't think I represented correctly when I said portable toilets. What we had planned potentially was it's a, it's a trailer, it has running water and it parks on like a driveway and it kind of looks like a mini RV, if you will, with two different doors and sinks and stuff. It's not like the things that aren't, the ones that you see at like tailgates that aren't very aesthetically pleasing to the eye. And that's kind of what we, we had going. And I did speak to Steve and Troy about that a little bit. And we're kind of just rolling forward on that and making sure that we follow everything that the city needs us to in order for us to kind of have this event and do it in a way that it doesn't disrupt anything or bother anyone in the area.
Well, thank you, Patrick. Congratulations to your fiance. And I'm going to ask if there's more public input and then we'll have the chief speak after that. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak during public input? Okay, I don't see anybody else. Do you, Mike?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Chief Troy Kelce to talk about the sound permit and and the wedding on June 25.
Yes, Patrick and I have talked and we've talked through the ordering ordinances that would apply and prevent him from having an event such as this. We routinely make exceptions, temporary exceptions to, for example, parking restrictions for special occasions. I've worked through this with Patrick and I believe that we have those arrangements made. The event that Patrick is hoping to host will be onsite, so there will be responsible persons at the residence to both help correct any issues, whether it be with parking or with noise complaints. I believe Patrick has made a genuine effort to reach out to the neighborhood and to the community. And from a public safety standpoint, I don't have any concerns. The potential issues that might arise can be easily corrected. And from a quality of life neighborhood position, I also believe that any issues that arrive, Patrick and I can work out that night. But I really anticipate that there will be few, if any, issues.
Okay, I think we ought to go ahead and do the consideration of Resolution Number 2128, granting a permit for audible sounds across property lines and oh, and locating portable toilets, which we don't really have portable toilets to locate, to accommodate a wedding at 55 Prospect Place on June 25, 2021. Is there a motion by council?
So moved.
Motion by Nick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by?
Bobby.
Bobby, I'm sorry. Discussion. Okay, Mike, we have a roll call vote.
Erbald?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Swales? Motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations, Patrick.
Patrick, I will recount to you as the event gets a little closer, so we can make sure that we continue to be on the same base.
All right, yeah, thank you. And if anyone has any questions, we're always open to anything, if you ask me or.
You can stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, or I understand if you can't stay. But thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, I think I've got some yard work to do. So thank you, guys, very much for making time. And thank you. You guys have a good one.
Thank you. We're going to go on to mayor's report.
Louise, can I jump in one more time again? I've got one more person with a phone number 319-541-3321. Is that you, Brennan? I think it is. I think there, I think Brennan's just listening and doesn't have the ability to speak. So I'm, I am going to rename that one because he had requested permission to, for the Zoom link tonight.
I think that's Sylvia's number.
No, Sylvia already came in. I thought I had her marked already.
No, I think that's Sylvia's.
I did. All right, I'll remark that back to Sylvia. Okay. I thought she was in with a different number.
Mike, I just, I just messaged Brennan. He's not able to make it, I think.
Okay, then that is Sylvia. All right, I thought I had renamed Sylvia once already, but sorry about that. Louise, I'm.
Thank you. We need to get all the little glitches worked out. First, we have consideration of Resolution 2129, accepting the resignation of Christine Anderson as city clerk effective June 30, 2021. And so why don't we go ahead and get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Nick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion. Well, first, I might as well start some discussion. I was thinking of with Chris, when she sent in the letter of resignation, how long I've known Chris. And we both started, I started as mayor in 2006. I was on council before, but I was mayor 2006 and it was her fish, first year on city council. Yes, Chris was on city council. Maybe some of you didn't know that for two years. And then she took over as the clerk in 2008. So we've been through a lot of different scenarios and I said to Chris, you know, someday we ought to write a book. And, but anyway, it's been highs and lows and craziness, but it's been great fun to have, to work with Chris. And I'm sorry to see you leave, Chris. You'll be missed. And, and I really appreciate your dedication for all those years to the city. And, you know, kind of works into this. I know we haven't voted on that, but I want to say I did get you a certificate of appreciation.
Thank you.
Presented to Chris Anderson for your dedicated service as city clerk from 2008 to 2021. And this.
Wait, there's more.
Wait, there's more, Chris. I've known you a long time and I think this fits you. Here's these coasters. I don't know, you could put a drink on them sometime of some sort. And it says, "I am an extremely friendly person until football season arrives." Hey, that's pretty right there, right, Chris?
That pretty much sums it up. Don't mess with my Hawks.
Yeah, we had fun always talking about the Hawks too. And I know we'll continue.
Yes.
If you, if you do write that book, I know a really great coffee shop bookstore that'll probably put it on the shelf.
Oh.
Maybe have a book signing party perhaps?
Yeah, there you go.
Throw that out there.
Okay, well.
It would be a best seller.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to also echo my thanks, Chris. You know, when I first joined council, you're such a welcoming presence as clerk. And I saw you putting in the hours and, you know, many hours, odd hours, including dealing with some really late meetings we had had. You've obviously been in on the audits that were very time consuming. And so many other, you know, odd jobs because we have such a small staff, obviously you were just wearing so many hats. Just really appreciate all of your work over the years.
Thank you.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Moore?
Hi.
O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Swales?
Reluctantly, aye.
Erbald?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. You will be missed, Chris.
Well, the city is in good hands. And thank you, everyone.
Now, I know you said you'd help us out whenever you could. And I appreciate that.
Yes, any questions that anyone has or whatever it may be, just, you know, where to find me, I'm not leaving. The house is hopefully still going to be standing, so reach out.
Thanks again, Chris.
Yes, thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
So we have consideration of Resolution Number 2130, appointing Mike Haverkamp as city clerk with compensation of $18 per hour effective July 1, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Nick motion, I'll second.
Motion by Nick and second by Bobby. Discussion.
Thanks for stepping in.
Roll call vote.
It's a tough act to follow. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi, sorry, I'm muted. Yep.
That's okay. Swales?
Aye.
Erbald?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And Chris, of course, you can stay on and listen to the meeting, but I.
You know, as tempting as that is, and, and I enjoy a good meeting as much as the rest of you, I am going to sign off, but I do want to say thank you very much.
Thanks again, Chris. I'll be running this over to your house one of these days.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Chris.
Discussion of future meetings by Zoom and/or in person. And I wanted to put that on the agenda and have some discussion because I've been attending a lot of meetings and they're addressing it at all these meetings that I attend, like JC cog MPO meetings, like EMA meetings, like Guide Link meetings, like all the various meetings. And most of them, like all but one is suggesting that we continue through the summer on Zoom. And I also, in support of moving it to.
I wonder if we should ask Greg to mute himself.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to get to him. He's, my, my participant list keeps jumping as people speak. So.
Let me see.
I think he's muted now.
Yeah, he is.
And the one meeting that's going to meet later in June is optional. It's EC cog in Cedar Rapids and it covers about five counties. And that room can get pretty crowded. I was a rep on that about five years ago and I wasn't planning to attend in person. It's an option. But I, I, I'm in support of recommending that we continue through the summer and re-address this for the fall. And I have, I haven't heard any complaints from the public not being able to attend. Or, in fact, I've heard comments that they like being able to attend by Zoom. And I wanted to put this in front of the council to see what they're thinking at this time.
I'll jump in. I've been vaccinated. I'd be fine to be in person, but I also think just because the technology works so well and in case there are people who would be concerned about, you know, from the public, be concerned about coming in, I'm, I'd be fine either way, but I'm certainly fine with what the mayor just proposed.
Yeah.
Said, sorry. Yeah, I'm fine with what Louise said that I think we can reevaluate in the fall. I do think it's very accessible by Zoom. It makes it easy for everyone. It's my opinion. And I'm also wondering if we will, does that mean we'll keep the community center closed pretty much, not open for reservations?
Just for small city meetings, I'm thinking we don't rent until, until we reevaluate for the fall. If that's okay with council.
I'm in agreement with everyone else.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sarah, I think you were trying to say something.
Yeah, no, it was a delay of that. Yeah, I, I mean, I personally am looking forward to meeting in person again, but I'm totally fine with the recommendation to hold off. I would hate someone to not come to a meeting because they didn't feel comfortable because we're in person. So I'm all right, waiting.
Mike and I've had a discussion about it and he said if there was someone from the public who didn't have capabilities and wanted to attend, they could come to the city office and he could space them out and they could be part of the meeting at, through the city office. Right, Mike?
Right. And I think, I think that'd be a very workable way. I mean, I think, looking long term, you might even, you could even look at a situation where maybe the council meets in person quarterly. You know? That, that the, that the majority of the meetings are on Zoom, but you do a couple a year that are in person. That's just me spitballing, but I'm happy to accommodate anybody who doesn't have access and would, wishes to address the council.
Okay, so I take that as the majority will proceed cautiously, will keep it on Zoom and readdress this for the fall. And no rentals until, will be considered until it's readdressed for fall. Okay, it'll help me out with my vacation a little bit too.
Anything for you, Louise.
Otherwise, you can just do the meeting, Bobby, and that would work too. So but anyway, is Greg here yet? Is Greg on? Zoom, he was going to, Greg Steltner? He was going to join.
Yeah, he was muted when there's, he was creating some noise while you were talking earlier.
He was going to talk about the hotel.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Oh, there you are. I mean, there's your name.
Kate, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Greg. Thank you.
I turned the, I turned the music off. And we're in the, we're in the hotel here. It's had the background music going. So how are you guys?
Real good, thank you. Dinner there twice. Very good.
Update on the items for, we talked about in the special meeting. We've completed, I think there was 18 items on the list. I think we've completed 10 of the 18. There's eight of them that's in process. I can go through them, but we're going to be knocking those out pretty quick here as well. Some of the, like, we're having a gate made. That's one of the reasons the gate's not done, being made yet. Still trying to find a vendor for bicycle, to, for bicycle parking, just some smaller items like that. And then I do have some questions for Joe Sia on a couple of them, but I'll work with him on that. Probably call him this week. As far as the hotel, yeah, we're, we're open, we're rolling. Trying to get, you know, as many customers in the door as we can. I'm kind of excited about all the food that I've had. It's been really good. The foods, I just had a Cobb salad. It was amazing. I had everything I've eaten here so far has been really, really good. Really, really happy with the success of the food so far. I'm going to improve upon that. But other than that, I don't, do you have anything to, Jim, do you have anything to add?
No, I've been planting flowers like crazy, so you guys will have to come over and take a look at them. So I'm real happy with our chefs and our bartenders and everybody and they've been all right. We're getting up to speed and I think everybody's going to really like this restaurant. Went totally up and running. Everything's been great so far, so. Other than that, I'm good.
Greg, I know you wanted to invite residents over. You told me you would like residents to stop by and you'd.
Yes. We're going to have, we're also going to have a little get together whenever we can get it scheduled for the City of University Heights. We're going to have a, like a, a social. I'm not sure exactly what it's going to be yet, but it's going to be just for University Heights. And it's going to be either on the first floor or the sixth floor. I'm letting Kelly Murphy handle that. But right now, what we're waiting on is some of our items to come in. For the sixth floor, we still have, you know, plates and forks and knives and that, those sorts of things to come in. And then we're definitely going to schedule that sometime in July to the City of University Heights and do a little wine and dine and social. And, and I'm excited to have them over. That, it's just like, I'm not, I haven't been able to schedule it yet.
So. That sounds wonderful.
I'm excited to show everybody in University Heights what it is.
Okay, are there any questions for Greg or Jim? Okay, no questions. Thank you very much to both of you. Now we'll go on to legal report. Steve, first, we have the fire contract.
Steve is muted. Oh, there you go. Sorry, I couldn't hear Louise. Oh, I guess she was muted. Yeah, the fire contract, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The fire contract's just an extension of the existing 2080 agreement. There's a, I guess, modest increase in the, the cost. We, we agreed on a, on a cost five years ago and included a CPI multiplier, yeah, multiplier for, for an annual increase. And, and so we've kind of restated the current amount based on those CPIs from the original amount and instituted the same escalation based on CPI for the next five years. So that's all it is. None of the other terms changed. Far as I know, talking with Chief Kelce, although I haven't done that directly before this meeting and, and the mayor feedback I've had from the community, which hasn't been a lot, but I have asked a couple of people, I guess. I think the service has been good. I think everybody's happy. For the first maybe 20, 20 years I was city attorney, people would say, why do we have a contractor corral, even though they're great and nobody, everybody's happy with them? But the Iowa City Fire Station's right across Melrose Avenue. So I think it makes a lot of sense from that standpoint. But that's, that's what the Resolution 2126 is, just the extension of the 2080 for fire protection.
If anybody wants to know why we didn't, I could talk to them about it sometime.
Yeah, you could.
Anyway, yeah, so consideration of Resolution 2126 is before you.
Make a motion.
Was that a motion by Lisa?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Lisa. And a second by?
Second.
Nick, because I see Nick on the screen, so I'm thinking it's by Nick. Okay, discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Scott?
Hi.
Swales?
Aye.
Erbald?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We're going to talk about the revenue sharing of the tax for the James on, at the Finkbine. Steve, you put details in your report. Did you want to add something?
Not a whole lot. We want, we reviewed this a few months ago that we would, we would enter into one agreement and then once everything was approved by the state of Iowa City Development Board, we'd come back and amend that agreement so we could extend the life of it in perpetuity and adjust the revenue sharing from 5347 to 5050. And that was a negotiate, those are both negotiated points. Louise and I did the math, the difference between 53% and 50% current dollars based on projected tax, based on projected tax valuation amounts to about, I think it was like $23 or $2400 was a year. So the percentages aren't nearly as significant, at least in my mind, as the longevity provision. I don't know what happens in four years. My sense is I won't be around to see it, but we'll, we'll see about that. But, but, you know, to have that in perpetuity makes a whole lot of sense.
Okay, consideration of Resolution 2127 is before the council. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Bobby, is there a second? Second by Sarah, is that right?
Right.
Uh, thank you. Discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Quails?
Aye.
Erbald?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. So now we go to Mike and Chris's report, renewal of the liquor license. Mike, you put that in your report.
Right. This is unlike last month where you did a new liquor license for the rooftop LLC. This is the Birch LLC, which operates Stella Restaurant. This is just a renewal. So it doesn't need a resolution, but it does need a council vote to approve the liquor license. So there, we, it will need a motion in a second.
I'll motion.
Motion by Bobby, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Motion carries five zero. Okay, next is the treasure report. And Lori had stated that this is the last council meeting before the end of the fiscal year. And if there were any added bills, be sure they go in. If we can pay them in this fiscal year, it's it's the best. Were there any additions?
I didn't hear from anybody.
Okay, thanks, Lori. Okay, so this also includes the payment for the payment number two for the Olive Court project. I saw that in there too. So are there any objections to pay in the warrants that are listed? Hearing none. The warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. Are there any questions for Lori? You know, I could review a little bit about, you know, you wrote that the that the de-ratio money was in this. I have it, the seventy four thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents from FEMA, which is seventy five percent of the cost of that. And it was just under a hundred thousand dollars. The citywide debris removal, that part of it was ninety eight thousand seven twenty five. So if we just kind of do round figures and say we had a hundred thousand in expenses and they sent us seventy five thousand, then we're still gonna get some money for the Swisher Track debris removal at I think that's about eight hundred dollars and the state of Iowa, anytime now should be sending us a check for ten percent of the total. And that'll be roughly ten thousand dollars. It's actually nine thousand nine seventy five. And so the cost of the city will be roughly just under fifteen thousand. And also, there were two parts of it. Troy and I have been working on this with Susan Hartman from the ER Assist. And the other thing was the CAT B cost, and that's emergency protective measures. And she worked real close with Troy on this because he knew all of the workers. And so that was about thirty five hundred dollars that cost. And so FEMA is gonna send us a check for twenty six hundred and the state will send us a check for three hundred and fifty. And then the University Heights share will be a little over five hundred dollars. I just thought I'd review some of that because the money's starting to come in and we're getting finished with it. And it's been wonderful working with Troy. I tell you, he has he has come up with some things that I wouldn't have thought of, you know, like adding some of the Swisher Track Trail damage, things like that. He he worked really hard at thinking of things, you know, I mean, I tried to too, but he's been one of the worker bees with the police officers, and it was just great having Troy work with with that too. So thanks for that help. And so the money will keep coming in and and hopefully we'll get the state money before the end of this fiscal year. There's a possibility we might. I I've been, anyway, I just wanted to give a report on that. And so the other thing is, then we should go to start with the community protection, the police chief and committee report. So Chief, I know you sent out a detailed report and you've been on RagBri all day or pre-RagBri. Do you want to add anything or?
Sure. If there's any questions, I certainly address it, but it's pretty self-explanatory. The only thing that is really of substance that's not reflected is this evening, just before the meeting, I spoke with the University of Bioathletics. I spoke with Marcus Wilson about their plans for fall football, what they're going to do as far as the percentage of fans they're going to let in, tailgating when parking lots will open up. They've been a really good neighbor on that and and Marcus was kind enough to share what their plans are. I am not at liberty to share them in an open public meeting. But I think that that announcement will come in the next few days, certainly by the end of the week. And it is all good news to see that the community is moving forward and and we'll be ready for football.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief? Thank you. Sarah, did you want to add anything?
No, I don't have anything additional.
Okay, very good. Okay, we'll go to engineer report and Josiah and Doug.
Thanks, Louise. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you.
Great, yep. So as you mentioned, pay application two from the Gulfview Project was approved and recommended for payment this month. That was one of our my agenda items here under the engineering report. The other one that I need a action on from the council is consideration of change order one. And I will give a quick, a brief update that this this description was in my written report. But the change order basically is is a document that documents any changes to the contract, either in in items that weren't in the contract originally and needed to be added. And and also, in this case, it changes dates on the project because those those are contractual dates. They need to be changed by a change order document. So we did have some additional costs. As I noted, we they found, I guess I shouldn't say we, I didn't do it, but they found a buried brick structure under the street and it had some abandoned crushed pipes in it. And so they did remove that because it was in the way. And since it was buried and we we didn't know it was there, they had to bring in some some flowable mortar, which is like a real, really viscous concrete material. And they filled up those abandoned pipes because we didn't want any open void spaces under the road where things can start to migrate, you know, either rock or dirt or water and get under there and cause problems. So that's one of the items on the change order. That was an additional six hundred dollars. And the second item is the change in the contract dates. We added several additional street panels to the project on the other side of the street up near Grand Avenue. They were in bad shape and the contractor had an issue over there as well. And once he had to get over there to fix some panels that they broke, we took that opportunity since the road was gonna be closed to address some of these additional three or four panels by the intersection. So they they did that work for us at the cost that they bid for the project, but it it did add about a week of extra work for them. And so if you, by approving this, we're changing the substantial completion date by one week from July fifteenth to July twenty second to accommodate the fact that we we gave them additional work. So that that is change order one, and I can address any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions?
Josiah, if you feel good about it, I have no reason to not.
I I do. Yeah, we, there's nothing, I mean, the cost for the concrete is is pretty standard. It is what it is to get one load delivered. And the date, that's just sort of a, you know, just being fair to the contractor, right? We take a look at how much time they had to spend there and and so we adjusted accordingly.
Yeah, so so then consideration of change order number one, as described by Josiah at the meeting and in his report, is there a motion to accept the change order number one?
All motion.
Motion by Bobby. Is there a second? Second by Doug. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Okay, I hear no, no. So motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Louise. So the construction update, you know, I I was gonna include some pictures like Greg and does with the hotel. And I looked at all my pictures and they're all of like rock piles and holes in the ground and buried utilities. So they aren't very appealing quite yet. But so next month, so I I guess the majority of the roadway and driving driveway and sidewalk has been paved. The infrastructure's in for the drain pipes and the intake boxes. So we're getting close. By the time we need, by the time we meet next month, they should be nearly done. The main items that you'll see if you go down there this month, there's some retaining wall to put in. There's some fencing to reinstall down by the but by the low point where the intakes are. And then they do have to get the tops on those intakes and pour some sidewalk and things like that. But oh, and then, of course, the permeable pavers that they're installing in the parking aisle. Those should, those are supposed to be delivered in about a week and a half. It was the last update, so. So that's that's pretty good. I I don't have any concerns about them missing their dates at this point. I think they're fine with that. And yeah, so it should be a good month.
And thanks for keeping it updated for Lisa Moore so she can keep this on the website, too. That's been helpful. And and handling the residents, talking to the residents, that's been very helpful to me and others. I know Josiah, you've done a wonderful job with that as you do with projects. It really cuts down on people asking us questions that we don't really know the answers to. Thank you for doing all that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. The, you know, it's been great. We've had a, we've had a very reliable onsite inspector for this job. A gentleman in a red pickup truck who's out there every day, Paul Moore.
Yes, I call him Mr. University Heights.
He's been great to work with as always, and particularly with this project.
Good. I did run into him at the farmer's market last week and he told me how well it was going. And that Stella was doing okay.
Yeah.
You know, despite the construction in the area. So we're we're thankful for all the residents' patience too with this. It'll be so nice when it's complete. Anything else, Josiah?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, Doug, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, other than it's it's turning out a really nice looking project that's really improved the visual appeal of that whole area. Looks really nice when you drive by there now. Looks really good.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Doug or Josiah? Okay, we'll move on to Bobby Scott, which first of all is consideration of Resolution number twenty one twenty five approving fund transfers from Special Assessments and the General Fund to Debt Service Fund. And Steve kind of explained that in his report, that this is something we have to have done. Did you want to explain that anymore, Steve, or?
Happy to answer any questions. It's it's just a an accounting formality. Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't, it's already budgeted, it doesn't change anything. We just have to move the authorize the moving of certain funds from one one fund to another.
Any questions? Okay, we'll have consideration Resolution twenty one twenty five is before you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Bobby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick. Further discussion. Roll call vote.
Herbald.
I'm.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Dot.
Hi.
Swales. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Bobby, did you have something else you wanted to report?
Well, so I understand, and a little bit, this is new to me, but we need to kind of publicize the salary raises. Mike, do you have the information?
I'm just gonna, I'm just about to share that.
Very good. So
that's not it. Everything crashed on me, right? I had this pulled up. Give me, keep talking, Bobby, give me a second.
Okay, so basically, all, you know, you know, part of the process is 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 making public the information related to staff salaries and increases. And so what we're wanting to do is that I will say that, you know, we worked hard to get the numbers to work. And Troy was a great team player in wanting to make the numbers work for everyone in the staff and how hard people are working. And so and so Troy basically volunteered to forego his his salary increase in order to get his team a raises. And so you can see on the page what, you know, what that looks like. Additionally, you know, Lori's been doing a great job and is worth her weight in gold. I don't know where Lori's at, but and so we gave her a small raise as well, but you know, it's what we can do. And so it doesn't, you know, indicate the full our our full, you know, appreciation for everyone, for everything everyone's doing. And so but I guess what you're looking at is really the raises for our for our staff. And so that's.
And these are the raises that you talked about that were budgeted for.
Exactly, yeah. So these.
Twenty two budget.
Yeah, we 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 talked about these in previous meetings. Steve Cool would have walked through this a little bit. But yeah, Troy was was gracious, I guess I'll say. He's a great guy enough to forego his salary so that the other officers could could realize, you know, a full raise. And and, you know, the reality is I think everyone on here is super thankful for the work that our officers have done, especially over the last twelve to eighteen months. And, you know, you think about what what things could have looked like, you know, just with different current events, racial tensions, everything. We've had a very positive, just a hardworking, I don't know, I just nothing but good things to say about our staff. And so our our officers and so, you know, we don't, we'd love to give them ten percent raises if we could, but this is all we could do. And so so here's basically what it is, so.
Are there any questions for Bobby? Okay, we'll go on, and this has to be included in the minutes, according to our auditor. Then we have, where are we? Oh, we have Nick with building zoning and sanitation.
Yeah, over the last month, Brian has continued to do a great job checking in with me as the issues come up. Tomorrow, we, Steve, Mike and Brian and I are gonna meet to go over the rental permit form stuff. And so we'll probably have something to report next month on that. I don't have anything else.
Any questions for Nick? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to other business. No e-government. We have e-government. I'm sorry, Lisa. You have a very colorful e-government report.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I don't think I have anything that I need to read up here, so we can thank Jeff Spiken Ski again and the volunteers for the bike breakfast.
Okay, any questions for Lisa? Okay, now we'll go to other business, which is covenant discussion. And who'd like to talk about that? Sarah, you are part of the committee and Casey Cook is no longer. Would you like to? I mean, anybody can talk about.
Yeah, I can. Yeah, I mean, essentially, I I don't have much update from last month. I know I kind of shared my thoughts on it last month and I haven't taken a lot of had a lot of time to take a lot of action on some of the action items that I proposed around like the the statement in the abstract and considering a donation to the NAACP. I did talk to Kevin Sanders after we met. He just had said, if we do something like that, like a recurring donation, he requested that it would be towards the local chapter. the local chapter rather than, and like the justice summit like I had proposed. So, um, that's, I don't really guess having anything else to bring to the council, um, at this point. Nick had offered to help a couple of times, so I'm gonna pick him up on that. Um, maybe in the next month or so, so. That's kind of all I have for it. I don't know if there's other, any other discussion.
Good.
So don't we need to have an agreement on what we're planning to do first, please?
I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
So Sarah's talking about action items. Have we agreed on action items is my question, yeah.
Well, there wasn't much discussion about it. She just told about what she would like to do for action items. Yes, I don't, I don't think the, the full council discussed action items. I agree, they didn't, but do you want to discuss some action items now, or?
But I guess let me ask a question. So, and I'm not sure what the, what the process is here, you know, you know, in terms of what we have to do, but, um, and, and as I'm thinking about the process so far, we've got a few options on the table in terms of what we can do. So the history on the whole thing, correct me if any of this is wrong. Someone came to the council, presented a email, asked that we read it aloud. It said, here's the history of University Heights. There are a few street names that honor individuals that, you know, have a history of, um, uh, you know, racial, uh, undertones, or I don't know how they correct, you know, verb is there, but basically restrictive covenants in University Heights are not a positive thing in terms of our community. Uh, what can we do to say, yeah, that's not us, we don't, that's, that's not what we support. And so the options on the table so far that I've heard are rename the street names that honor those individuals who supported those things in the past, right? Or we can, um, support the, uh, I guess now Sarah's saying the local chapter of the NAACP rather than the summit itself entirely. And, uh, or the other option is to, um, to basically, to basically put a statement that would be attached to all the deeds in University Heights, or the ones that were affected by the restrictive covenants that say, you know, basically, we no longer acknowledge this part of our past because we want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Right? And, uh, was there another option that I forgot about? Any of Sarah or Nick or Lisa?
There were three that I was aware of.
Yeah, that was it. And then, well, I will say the committee, uh, one other option the committee talked about was like a historical marker somewhere. Um, I, I guess I didn't mention that last month because I had kind of known there wasn't a lot of support for it, but, um, yes, that was another option that the committee had brought up.
I don't know. So it, as I've been thinking about it, and you guys can talk about it, too, I'm, I'm a little bit cautious to do anything right now that would, you know, there's a couple of things. There's the, um, I guess, uh, the, the, the principal issue of, of the conversation, and then the financial issue, impact of the conversation. As far as it relates financially, you know, I'm, I'm cautious to spend any money on it right now, just because, you know, our police chief, we've had, we've had a really phenomenal year from a police force standpoint. I think everyone would be supportive of that, um, statement, but we've had a great year. And, you know, here our police chief hasn't gotten a raise and I'm cautious to spend any money on anything, you know, whatsoever. You know, with that in light, but, um, in, in light of all that, I guess, but, uh, you know, the idea of, um, trying to, I'm, I'm kind of processing this verbally here, so apologize, but, uh, I don't, I, so I live on Cozer. Cozer Avenue was one of the streets, right, that, that was suggested in the past, but I think personally, my thought is that's a really large undertaking. And as far as the process goes, uh, I don't know where it would end. So, co, you know, is it relates to racial tensions and prejudice and racism and, at, you know, University Heights, I don't know where it stops because, you know, I think the United States in general has a racist history and you can't erase that, right? But the, the ideas, the idea of, of trying to get rid of the Cozers as honoring them, or the Lemers, or whoever the other people is, I don't know that I think that's an effective, uh, strategy, I guess, because if you take it to its ultimate extreme, you're, you're basically just eliminating the, the history of the United States in general. And, you know, I'm kind of rambling, but I don't feel like renaming Cozer is the best option, right? I, I'm all about being part of the solution instead of part of the problem, but I don't know that, um, but I don't know that renaming Cozer is the best option. So I, I, I really don't know what I'm saying here, other than let's, let's try to, um, I, I don't know if, I mean, Louise or Steve or whoever, what's the process of like getting that option maybe off the table? I don't know if that's, if that's a, uh, the best way to say it, but.
I think council can make a motion, or they can just say, this is what we want to do and direct Steve, or, I mean, count a little bit, Steve. I mean, they can just make a motion to decide something or not make a motion and just discuss where they want to go from here. Is that, Steve?
Yeah, I think that's right. It's always a little, um, awkward for a, a, a body, whether it's a city councilor and anybody else to sort of, uh, you know, take action to not take action, you know? I make a motion that we not change the street name. Um, you, you could do that. Uh, as, as Louise said, if, if you wanted, if, if, if the idea of placing this, uh, this, uh, what I'm gonna call corrective, uh, kind of language, uh, within the recorder's office is the way that the council would like to do, I, I, or the direction the council would like to do, would like to go, uh, you know, with or without changing a street name, I would suggest you pass a motion to that effect, you know? Direct city attorney to come back with something we can record, look at the language and, and then approve it and record it next month, but not change the street names or, and change the street names. So I think if you adopt a motion like that tonight, I'll, I can put something together for next month. Uh, to, to change a street name takes a formal resolution, so you're not in a position to do that tonight, even if you wanted to, uh, to adopt that, uh, language that would be placed with the recorder's office, so it would come up in all the abstracts once they're, once they're brought up to date. That'll take a resolution, so I can, I can get that ready for next month either way. So, sorry for the long-winded answer, but, yeah, I think that's your, your answer is.
What, what type of time commitment is that, Steve? Because I think, you know, the, the tension is, you know, money, and we're, we're spending taxpayer dollars. Money is an important part of the, the equation. And so, um, obviously, obviously, all this is very important. We want to be a community that's welcoming to every single person. And no one's in love with our history as a country and, and all that, right? But what is, just trying to balance that, those tensions. What do you think it would involve from a, from a time standpoint, Steve, from your, your standpoint to do that? Because you're, you know, we're paying you, obviously, and, uh, but we also want to say, hey, everyone is welcome here. And we just, we want to be part of the solution rather than part of the problem, basically, is, is kind of that. What, what do you think, Steve, in that regard?
Yep, but I, what I envision, when I talked with, uh, with Sarah, uh, O'Sullivan about the idea of placing something of record that would come up every time, um, you know, somebody's abstract or title is brought up to date. Yeah, you know, is it, is a fairly simple statement. So, you know, I think it's easily a couple of hours, so less than five hundred dollars, I guess, would be my estimate of how, how much time. Now, if, if, if you want your resolution to, to, you know, recite lots of history and, you know, if it's gonna take a bunch of research or something, uh, that, that would change my answer, but, but that's, that's what I have in mind is just, is a resolution that, um, recites some of the history and, and the reasons that the council now takes the action it's gonna take by adopting the resolution. But the resolution itself will be pretty straightforward. And, um, you know, it's something I would circulate to the council for review and comment, because the language really would be more yours to choose. A lot of the things that, that I present, it's, it's still the council's to, to adopt. I mean, obviously, you, you vote on the twenty-eighty agreements and so forth, but, but there are certain things that from my standpoint, as a city attorney, those agreements kind of need to say this and that. This wouldn't be so much that way. It would be more of, uh, what I would call a policy level, uh, statement. Uh, so I would want the council's input. And I would think it would be something we could either discuss and sort of hash out at a, at a July council meeting, or, uh, or discuss it in July and adopt it in August. Um, but that would be really the only cost, uh, would be drafting the resolution and then recording it, uh, filing it with the Johnson County Recorder's Office, which would be like a fifty-dollar, uh, recording fee, something like that. And then, and then it, it, and then it would sit, okay? Uh, it would sit at the recorder's office, just like those existing, uh, historical covenants sit. And, and the only time anyone, well, there, there would be two times in, in my world, kind of normal circumstances, when someone would encounter, uh, that resolution, once we file it with the recorder. The first one, which I think would be extremely rare, is if somebody just went down to the recorder's office, they're all public records, and said, I'd like to look at University Heights resolutions that have been recorded, or something like that. So I don't think that would happen very often, but it could. And the more likely, uh, time when, when this statement would be, would be brought to someone's attention is when someone either, uh, either sells and buys a home in University Heights, that, that's when the abstract gets updated. Or when somebody refinances their mortgage. That's the other time, when, when the abstract gets updated. I, you know, I, it's, any one of you tomorrow morning could walk down to the recorder's office, or walk to a abstracter's office and say, I'm not selling my house and I'm not refinancing, but I want you to update my abstract. I, I've never heard anybody really doing that, but you could do that, too. So either somebody goes down to look at it, or, yeah.
Would this be something to interject? Would this be something that you would, every time some, some, every time an abstract needs to be updated, Steve, that you would be involved in specifically because of that? No, it would just be a one-time thing?
Yeah, so our only involvement, I'll, I'll speak for myself, but I'll also, uh, speak for the council and the city. Our only involvement would be the council adapting, uh, the, the resolution with the language. Uh, somebody from the city, either my office or somebody else, recording this document with Johnson County Recorder, and that's it. And then, and then when somebody goes to sell a home in University Heights, the buyer or the buyer's real estate agent, through the normal process of a real estate transaction, says to the seller, hey, send the abstract down to the recorder to get it updated, and then send it over to my lawyer to, uh, look at the title, okay? And then when the abstracting company updates that abstract, that company is going to reflect the language of that resolution in the abstract. The city won't need to do a darn thing, just let it sit there, which is the purpose of it. And, and, and the reason, the, you know, the idea behind it, I think, at least my idea in talking with Sarah, I guess I don't want to speak for her, but the idea is these documents exist and they exist in the public record. And so, yeah, every time somebody looks in their abstract, uh, they see it. Now, as I said, in the normal course, when abstracts of title get updated, I don't see that those documents, those historic documents, I don't think that they get they don't get re-added, they just, they're already there, okay? But every time the abstract would get updated, if you had this new language, well, it would be there, okay? And so frankly, it would be there, and it would be a little farther, a lot farther to the top of the abstract. Abstract's a historical document, uh, I mean, it, it's a chronological document. Uh, if, if, if we, if we had one here, if you ever look at one, you know, you, you kind of open it up and you go to the very last page, that's the first entry. And the first entry almost always says, United States government to somebody. Uh, somebody received what's called a, a land patent from the government. Uh, you know, all of University Heights was probably uh, granted to a homesteader, you know, uh, so there's probably one person. I don't know that for sure, I could look, but you know, then it goes down, it marches down through time. So, um, so by the time you get to the, the top of the abstract, uh, the most recent things, well, that's where this would show. So you wouldn't have to dig very far for it, which is somewhat of an advantage. But what the city's involvement and my involvement would be, would, would only be in placing that document of record.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, I think that that is a somewhat easy way. Man, I know it's symbolic, but you know, it's a way for us to, to sort of address that. You know, the, the genesis of the, of the land that became the town. I know it wasn't the town when the, when the covenants were placed, but I think it's a way for us, you know, low cost, you know, to sort of make the statement that, you know, that we are a welcoming community and the, you know, racial restriction in the past is not who we are today. So I'd like to see us do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I think I'm there, honestly. I think I'm with you. I mean, I don't know what the next steps are. Um, maybe Steve and Sarah and anyone else wants to work on that statement that gets put into the deed. And.
That'd be a good idea to have one other council member work on it.
I'd like to be a part of that.
Oh, okay, Lisa. So Lisa and Sarah would volunteer to work on that with Steve and.
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, I.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, and this sounds, I mean, as a bystander sitting on the fence watching, this almost sounds like a disclaimer more than, I don't know, an education, or is it a little bit of both? Do you think maybe a proclamation would be best, you know, something that the council as a whole would represent in our moving forward? Uh, if we, I mean, would it cost the city that much to have a, uh, a resolution, even a proclamation? I guess it just basically has no affiliation with the city at all of these previous names. You know, I, I get it, it sounded kind of like Bobby, I don't want to do a knee-jerk reaction. At the same time, I don't want to underreact either. So, uh, I, I don't want the, the right answer is here, but I, I guess you could have that at the recorder's office, but I still think as a city, as a body, it's still had like a, a public historic, uh, Asian is in the city of current. I mean, it's basically, at the end of the day, we just want to make sure that there's no affiliation. We distance ourselves from previous verbiage and affiliation and connections with these folks that, uh, were in our history, history. What's your thought on that?
Well, a couple of things I would say. First, I, I want to, I mean, it's clearly, this is the council prerogative. This is, this is not the city attorney, uh, decision. So I want to make that very clear. I, I, if I hear, if I hear you right, I mean, I think that what I'm talking about in terms of a document that could be placed of record, I think it can serve the dual purpose of being that proclamation. I mean, I think you can entitle the proclamation, which isn't really what you were asking, but you know, it, it, if the city wants, I think the city would be very much in, uh, in, in good favor by saying, we're gonna adopt this resolution and we're gonna read it out loud at the council meeting, and we want everybody to know about it, and maybe even issue a press release or something. Um, so the, so in terms of taking the, the public stand, um, I think that the, the document that I have in mind, uh, would very much uh, permit the city to do just that. Uh, more broadly, in terms of placing the document of record, um, I, the, the real reason that, that this came to my mind, i- is that these, these racially restrictive covenants, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're pieces of, of, of the. They're they're, you know, they're they're pieces of of uh of the of the historical record. They're in abstracts of title. So an abstract of title, uh, the only two times I've. I I've know of where the word abstract get you, it it's 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 use of the word abstract in the in the sense of a summary. So if you look at an academic paper, lots of times there'll be an abstract at the top, it's a summary. That's what an abstract of title is, the summary of title. An abstract that you may or may not have in your basement or your file cabinet or something, it's not a title document. Okay, it's not like the title to your vehicle and, oh my gosh, we have to find the abstract or we don't have a title to our house. No, you have title to your house because the deed was recorded at at the recorder's office. The abstract has value, um, if you have it and you need to get it updated.
Uh-oh.
We lost him.
Yeah. Uh, Steve, you're, it froze.
He, this thing, I think we lost him. Yeah, I think I think as I think about what Steve's saying and um, you know. I wanted to be clear that I think everyone here on the council wants the. The culture of University Heights to be one of, we are so welcoming, we want everyone and anyone. Who wants to live here to live here. And. I mean, I just want to state, like, the fact that, I'm, I don't know how else to say this, but how crazy is it? That you could actually, you could actually write into law a restrictive covenant that would limit. Race, like, limit property ownership by race. How crazy is that? Can we get like a, like, yes, that's crazy? Like, that's ridiculous. Like, what a different time that was, that you could actually do that. That is ridiculous. Can I just say that? I I don't know how else to say it, like, what? Other than, that's, that's a different time, that's a different day and age. We are not living in that day and age right now. And we want everyone. And anyone. To feel comfortable living in University Heights and to know that they're welcome. And and so. Um, you know, I I I don't know how the best. You know, I don't know the best option or avenue to do that. If it's, if it's writing in a. Um, like, like, you know, Steve's talking about writing in a proclamation into the deed or the abstract. Just kind of saying, hey, you know, we disavow basically that that past. It's not true of us anymore. Or if it's just to acknowledge it here in a meeting or whatever that is, I want to do that. Um, but also I want to be careful about, you know, trying to erase the. Real realistically, trying to erase the racist history of our country. I don't think that's necessarily helpful either either, because others, we don't know how far we've come. And. Um, I certainly disavow any of that. But I just want to do what's 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 helpful now, you know, for people. And so. Yeah, I I guess I'll stop talking, but is anyone else, and I'm just going to turn it back to you guys.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, um, I think something in the abstract makes sense, I, you know, when even. I mean, even attorneys, I think, when you read through them, if you skim them and you see that, I think. I think later on, it's nice to see some sort of corrective statement. I think the wording will be important. Um, I would like to be a part of that. And when Sarah had mentioned that, you know, she may. Take me up on the offer to be part of that wording. Um, I really would like to be part of that. I think the wording is important. Um, I think that that could proceed by whoever writing a draft. Um, maybe we, you know, talk about it at council then. I think often it's helpful. To have something tangible to work off of, you know, to have a starting point of some sort. Um, so however, you know, I'd be happy to be part of that, but if someone else wants to get a starting point. Um, kind of like, you know, as as we did with ordinance two thirty-five, you know, get it started, make edits. You know, see what what people can agree on, see what ideas come up. I I would also say, though, I I disagree on the the street names issue. Um, you know, I understand about the point about the extremes. But, you know, we have, you, in this case, I mean, I I break it down. We had community members who approached the council with concerns about. Um, I think the perception that you're honoring. These people by having them as street names, right? I don't know these people. I don't have, I probably don't know mu- as much about the history as as most of you in terms of University Heights. I know. When I was not on council, that's when all this got started. Um, but I think in our situation, our 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 situation is distinguishable, I think. From the country as a whole and the founding of the country in the sense that. It seems just so connected and and related to the founding where. Um, and again, I don't have full information, so maybe I'm wrong about this. But to me also with things like this, you know, it's it's something we can do. It's not changing everything. You know, Bobby, I definitely understand what you're saying about, wow, where do you start? But for me, it would be, you start here, you know, it's something we can do. Um, it's something that is, you know, from my understanding of what the work that Sarah's done and looking into the. Process, it wouldn't be overwhelming. Um, I I'm not sitting here saying that we then need to have a debate over. Um, you know, what the, you know, who the who the new people would be on the street names. To me, it. Why don't they just be trees or plants or something like that? Um, you know, just something that just makes it so it's not honoring. Um, people who, again, community members have identified and and are concerned about. I I think it does potentially send a message. I don't know if I should say potentially. I think for people who look into it and see that the street names are still up there. Um, to me, that is. I'm hearing that that's sending the strong message from from other people. Um, it's not something, again, not being the biggest story in terms of University Heights, I. You know, this obviously was brought uh to me by others. It's not something that I have looked into. Um, and and I I think other cities have, you know, looked at this sort of situation and taken a an approach of changing the names, so. Um, so, yeah, so that I guess that would be my my thought. Um, I I guess I would like if. If there's support, at least to look at a proposal on this, I guess that would be for me similar, similar to the the abstract issue and just. You know, see what people think, get something put together, see if people can agree on on ideas. But, yeah, I mean, to me, I I definitely, Bobby, hear what you're saying about about just the enormity of. Things in the history and, you know, there's recognition of how far we come. But at the same time, you know, I don't think we have to take on that entire burden right now. I think we have a very narrow. Um, issue that's been presented. It seems to me it's something that can be dealt with. And so it it'd be my, I would be in support of. Of dealing with it by changing the names.
Uh, Steve Ballard's back on, by the way. He's back on.
Steve, you're no longer the city attorney. Sorry, you missed out. I had to say it, I couldn't help it. Nick, I would, I would say that, yeah, I mean, I. I fully, I mean, it it seems clear to me here that everyone wants to be part of the solution, right? Instead of part of the problem, it's just, what's the best possible? Course of action, right, to do that. It's unclear to me right now what that is, is. It it Nick, your solution of changing the street names, it's it's obviously your your. Approach is, let's go above and beyond, because why not? We want to be part of the solution, right? And, I mean, maybe I'm paraphrasing that, but that seems like a very good motivation, right? For wanting to do that and saying, yeah, let's do that. I I I couldn't necessarily disagree with that, but I also don't, it's just like, where do you stop? I mean, at some point. At some point, the uh. It's inescapable, our our country's history, and you can't. You can't go deeper and deeper and deeper and get rid of it, because it's just there, right? And so, while I'm disagreeing with you, I'm also agreeing with you that, yeah, it's there. And we we're all clear that we we don't want to be part of the problem, we want to be part of the solution. And so, I don't know what. I don't know what the right solution is. I know this issue is is close to home with me, you know, I've got four adopted children who are. You know, from a different country and look very different than me, but um, but I. I think we're all on the same page in that we want to be part of the solution instead of the problem. I I think it's okay, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is. Um, but I but I also want to. Um, be conscious of all the all the factors. We got to be be conscious of. You know, the people trying to move to the community and and the taxpayer dollars and everything we're spending. You know, our police chief didn't get a raise this year. And so. Um, you know, whatever, and 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 everyone has a different scale of. Um, magnitude of priorities as as the, you know, as all these issues fall. And I think that's okay. Um, and I'm glad we're having this discussion. Uh, so all all to say, I don't know where we go from here, but I I'm saying. I think everyone's really on the same page. It's just in terms of what do we think is the right solution to the problem? Problem, I don't know. So.
And I, I guess I would like to say that the suggestion that I had made. Which I think we just don't have money in the budget. To follow through on, but my suggestion was, let's continue on a. Sustaining basis to support the N double A C P, whether that's the summit or the local chapter. Um, I think that's a a meaningful and productive step rather than just a. What I would term a gesture. I think they actually are working for something that we can all agree on. But I understand what Bobby's saying. We don't have money at this point and we do need to be physically responsible. Which is why I don't want to start down the road of a lot of other things that are going to cost. Money and not just for the city and some of the terms, it, you know, it's going to be. A lot for for residents also. So that's, that's my opinion. And I guess I, I'd also like to point out something that, you know. And I have it here in a paragraph, you know, our tiny little community is already a leader. We had ordinance two thirty-five that's being held up as a model for the state. We have. This council and the previous council, we've encouraged and supported our police chief. In his efforts cooperating with the N double A C P. To work against any hint of discriminatory practice. And hosting in University Heights, the work session of law enforcement leaders from across the state to bring about productive reform. And this council voted to support the N double A C P's Iowa Summit on Justice and Disparities that I talked about before. You know, this is, this is University Heights today, so we are taking steps. It's not like we're looking for things that. That we need to do. We we have done things, we are doing things. And I think our local pres- president of the local chapter would would be in agreement with that. He did agree with that in the meeting that that Sarah and I had with Kevin, so.
Yeah, no, I I think you're right. I mean, from the financial standpoint, um. You know, my sense is that that is something that they think, um, that the the local chapter thinks could could do a lot of good. Especially with young people and educating. Um, I also agree that University Heights has been a leader and I think, you know, our chief deserves a lot of credit. And I'm glad you brought that up, um, because that that's really, I think, a big part of it. Um, is what he's been able to do, you know, keeping the good relationship with Kevin Sanders that. Um, has has developed over the years. Um, and so, yeah, I mean, I I agree that those other things are good too. I'm. You know, from a financial standpoint, to it's always, you know, I'm always, I'm pretty conservative when, especially in spending other people's money. Um, I think that those things would be um, positive. You know, I don't know where where they would come from in terms of the budget right now. Um, and and, you know, the street name thing, again, I just. It it was something brought to to me as opposed to, you know, me um, going out and finding the issue and and I just. Wanted to be clear that that's just, you know, my position. And it just, you know, to me, it's. I I'm not personally into honoring people by naming things necessarily. Um, because, you know, I think you can bring a lot of issues along with it, but when it comes to. Um, the the street name's an issue, I think it is. And, you know, I I think that if a community member is saying that they look at that as an honor. Um, I don't have any reason to dispute that. I I guess that's one way to to put it. Um, and again, it's, you know, we can't do everything necessarily, but to me, it is something we can do. Win, you know, might be the issue, especially if if it is a budgetary issue, that might be. The other question, may, you know, maybe it's not that we need to do everything immediately, but maybe we also don't. Shoot things down permanently right now. And we say, okay, you know, we've got a list of things, what can we do? You know, let's, let's keep things moving, let's continue to be a leader. You know, that's, that's one reason why I think we, you know, in in some ways exist as a community. We are, we are able to do things like this. It would be harder for a bigger city to do it. And we do have Iowa City, which is a great community surrounding us. Um, so, you know, again, you look at kind of what are we doing as as our separate city? And I think. Being out front on these sorts of issues is something that is, you know, is becoming the, you know, part of the identity. So. Um, you know, I appreciate every, appreciate everybody's words. I I agree with largely everything that's being said. Um, I think we are a leader. I I'd like to continue to be a leader on these sorts of issues. Again, appreciate that Troy's been. Um, out front in in his position doing doing a lot. In in terms of the financial piece, I think, you know, I think we can be clear if. If community members are watching this and they say, wow, I really wish that the council right now said, you know, let's. Give money to the the local chapter, I would just say, community members can also do that, you know, they could do that right now. Um, if they so desired, um, and I would encourage them to, I I assume, contact council or we could get them in touch with. Kevin Sanders if they're, if they're just really wanting to um, send some money to the local chapter. Um, again, the street name thing, that would be something that I I understand would be council's prerogative, so. Um, so that's again, you know, maybe something that's distinguishable. I think again, with the abstract, you know, something that we, that's something we can do, so. Um, I I hope, and and Steve, when you were off, we were kind of talking about how to, I think, when you were off, how to get things started. With the abstract language, and I I guess it was my encouragement. Just that someone starts somewhere, get some language put together, and then I I just wanted to be able to have the opportunity to review it. Give proposed changes or suggestions, additions, et cetera. Um, so I don't know, eh, you know, if if, who wants, I guess. Um, I guess, Sarah, you're kind of the, maybe the leader of this issue. Um, if you're up for, you know. Pulling in whoever you want to pull in to get some initial language or or what, what would be the next step?
Well, you know, another option is that it's that you and Lisa give this, Sarah, I mean, I'm. Definitely was on the committee and I support this concept. I am not a wordsmith, so I think you were both. Um, you know, better writers. So I I would actually be fine if the two of you wanted to take the first stab. Um, I don't know that I necessarily have to be part of that. Um, I don't know what you think about that. Otherwise, yeah, I could work with Lisa and then sort of bring you in next before we bring it to council.
Either way.
Did Steve say some?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Steve, did did you have something in mind? Is that what you said or did I misunderstand?
Yeah, no, I do have something in mind. I've not, not like I can just say say it right now, but yeah.
But we could start with you.
Yeah, yeah, I would say that whichever two I'm going to work with or work with me, I I would say two council people, so we, you know. Don't have the the public meeting issue. Uh, and then and then circulate it, uh, and then talk about it at the next meeting. And if if it's in a place that we can, the council uh wants to make changes during that meeting. Uh, do so, adopt it, if or or reject it, whatever. Uh, if if it's a, if it's a. Try again, come back in August, then to me, that's what it is. But I'm I'm happy to work with the with anyone and who whoever is going to work on this. I'll 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 get something out to you so we can start to look at something.
What I heard is Sarah has spent hours and hours working on this committee and putting this all together and she. I believe she said, I'm willing to pass it to whoever else wants to do it, and I hear it might be Nick and Lisa. Is that correct, Sarah? You'd be, I mean, you've spent.
Yes, I am happy to, yeah, I, and it's, yes, I am happy to pass.
You still get input.
Right, yeah, I just think Lisa and Nick are probably sounding more interested in, and maybe just better suited for the actual verbiage. That's not my strong suit, so.
So I do want to go back to Bobby, because there is a cost to this.
No, absolutely, and.
And, and you're right, you know, we're not giving our fabulous police chief a raise. I feel really bad about that.
Yeah, you're, well, you're right, Lisa. It's, it's a catch twenty-two, if we had a million dollar, you know, unlimited funds, we'd do everything we wanted to. Here's, here's, I'm just thinking through this out loud, listening to Nick and his thoughts and Steve and his thoughts. I'm sure Steve is gonna be very generous in his, Steve Ballard is gonna be very generous in his amount of time that he devotes to this and/or the amount of time he bills the, you know, city. And I'm gonna be very generous in the amount of money that I give to the University Heights, to this issue, because it is very important to me personally. And so, I'm honestly, you know, I'm willing to pony up, I guess, is, is the, whatever. I, 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 this is an issue that's important to me, and I think that I'm willing to give to it too. So Steve, you know, if you, you know, feel like this is a reasonable amount of money, I'm saying personally, not as a city council, but as a citizen of University Heights, I'm willing to foot the bill for something like this. If, you know, you feel like it can be a reasonable amount of money, and we want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem, it's good to acknowledge all of the social justice things that are going on around us. We want to be a community that's welcoming to people. I, I don't disagree with anything, you know, most, any of you have said, everyone on here is well intentioned. So, just throwing that all out there.
Okay, so.
That was a lot, but.
Did Bobby, did you want to serve on the committee? Is that what you were saying too?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
You have a, a true interest, I mean, I mean, I know you're suggesting financial support, but are you also wanting to be on this committee?
Yes.
With time, okay. So, I, I hear we have Nick and Lisa and Bobby who want to serve on the committee, and we can only have two. I mean, of course.
I'm, I'm fine not being on a committee, I mean, I, I just, you know, I can look at the draft, whatever draft is put together. I'll just be ready to look at it and, you know, prior to the meeting and, and be ready to talk about any ideas or, or whatever. I, I'm not too concerned about it. So I think that if Lisa and Bobby wanted to, to do that, that's fine with me too.
Okay, and that's fine with you, Sarah and Doug?
Yeah.
And Doug?
Doug looks frozen to me.
I know.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. Okay, so.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to get a true consensus about this, and so I hear you want to work, you two will start working on it and then bring it to Steve at some point. Or did you?
I heard it coming from Steve.
You want it coming from Steve?
That's what I heard.
Yeah, I'll get it to the two of you, we'll work, the three of us will work together and get it to the council.
Phenomenal.
Great.
Can I add one thing, Louise, I apologize?
No, sure.
I apologize for my technical difficulties.
Yeah, if you don't disappear.
Thanks, I'll try not to. So the two points I wanted to make very, very briefly, so these covenants that are of record at the Recorder's Office, my thought in, in coming up with this resolution proclamation idea is, you know, as we talk about like solutions to a, a years-old historical document that's at the Recorder's Office, my solution, my thought was, why don't we come up with a present day, present statement proclamation that goes in exactly the same place? Every time somebody scoops up the old stuff, they're gonna get the new stuff. That, that was, that was my purpose. I, I fully respect and acknowledge that, that that's not the solution to every, to every issue that's raised by the, the discussion the council's having now, but that's why I focused on that one, is that, you know, because I, I was aware of those covenants. I haven't been aware of them since nineteen ninety-one, when I started practicing law. You know, this, so what do you do with them? And there's, then there's a nationwide debate, if, if you want to, if you want to go, uh, look, look online, you know, so some people say, well, we should, you know, we should erase them from the Recorder's Office. I, I don't know that this has come up much in Iowa. And the recorder will say, well, I can't do that unless the state changes the law and says I either can or I must, okay? And then there's other people who are as much on the side of forward-thinking, present-day, you know, attitudes, let's say, and values, who would say, no, these, these, this is history, we don't, you don't erase history. You, you don't perpetuate the bad parts of it, but you don't erase it. So there's a, there's that sub-debate. But again, my point was just, well, I know where those covenants are, I know how they get access generally, I know why they get brought up to date. So, why don't you just, why don't we just put something there, so that every time the, the old stuff gets mentioned, so does the new stuff? And I, and I talked with the recorder about it, and she seemed very receptive to it, which is helpful. So, that's the one point I wanted to make. The second point, on the street name, if the council wants to move in that direction, it's a, I mean, I, I, I don't want to oversimplify, but from a legal standpoint, it's a very simple process, you just adopt a resolution saying, this street is now known as this. Now, now notifying all the people that mail letters and changing the street signs and all that sort of stuff, you know, that's beyond my abilities to, to give you much opinion on. But the process is, you know, if you want to change the name, first of all, you need to make that decision. And second of all, you need to know what the new name is, and then we pass a resolution, and, and that, that's kind of how you do that. Thank you.
Okay, so Bobby and Lisa are gonna serve on this committee and work with Steve and see what to bring back to the council in July. Right, and go from there.
Yep.
Okay, so.
So we're, so sorry, sorry, Louise, before we move on, so regarding the N double A C P donation, I guess, is the sort of the general thought that we just, it's not something we can afford this year, like, do we? I don't know, I'm just wondering if we pursue that option any, any further? I mean, I get the sensitivity around the city finances and being responsible.
I think this council wants to leave the option on the table, but they also want to, I hear them saying they want to be fiscally responsible also. But, right now, it's not working. I mean, things can change. The hotel's opening up, I mean, we're recovering, hopefully recovering from COVID, we'll recover, you know what I mean, we, I don't, I, I don't think this council wants these options removed from the table.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think, yeah, I agree with you, at least, yes.
So, I don't think it's all wrapped up in just one discussion, I think it's ongoing. But I hear the council wanting to start with this right now. So.
Very good, I, can I just say, can I just say as a kind of, you know, bookend to this conversation? This is a tough conversation, thanks everyone for being willing and able to have it, not easy. It's clear to me that everyone on council and Louise and Steve, you know, everyone wants to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. It's not easy to do that, there are lots of different viewpoints on the best way to accomplish that. But it's clear to me that everyone wants to be on the part of the solution problem, right? And so, what the best way to accomplish that is a little bit different, it seems. But all that to say, thank you, everyone, it, it seems like there's a high level of trust here. And, you know, University Heights is not, it's a different University Heights than it was a few years ago, right? We're excited about being a community that welcomes everyone, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, any, anyone else want to say anything? Okay, we'll, we'll go from there. And are there any announcements that anyone wants to make? Then I'm going to ask if there's any objection for adjournment. Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone. See you in July on Zoom.
Thank you.
Thank you.